We're going to bring the Berlin Select Board Meeting to order for April twenty ninth, I was gonna say August. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped, your image and voice may be recorded. We'll call this to order at seven oh two. So we've got three sets of minutes and today I sent a few typos to Dee so she fixed those and put them back in the Google Drive, I believe. And so I'm all set, do I hear a motion?
Uh, move to approve those three sets of minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. General public comment. Okay, enough enough here. Alrighty. Moving on to hearings, appointments and presentations. We have a, can we, did I ask you this, Kristen, can we do the two of them together? Licenses? Or do we need to do them separately?
I would recommend doing those separate, I had moved them up because we did have a hearing, but it didn't make it into the newsletter, so it needed to be postponed.
Okay.
But yeah, separate vote would be best.
Okay, so first we have the one day pouring license application for dirigible. Dirigible, is that right? Brewing company. And they, I don't know what day it was, but they're gonna be at nineteen Carter.
That was May fourth.
May fourth?
Uh, eleventh.
Eleven.
May eleventh, okay. And so, and everybody's all set that you needed to contact?
Yes.
They're good?
All the feedback is good.
Okay, good. All right, um, do I hear a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve the one day pour permit for dirigible brewing at nineteen Carter.
Seconded.
Okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we also have a one day special pouring license application from Marze Wine. Um, and this is for June twenty ninth, from five to eight thirty, I can't even read my writing, this is also at nineteen Carter. Do I hear a motion?
Uh, so moved, if I close my tab that held all my stuff.
Seconded.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, and just so people know, somebody had asked me have, if we had gotten a liquor license request for the old Flat Penny and just so you know that it's coming. It was going to be on tonight and it's called West Street Tavern. Um, and it will be on the agenda, I believe, May twentieth, if they get their paper advertising in. Okay. So, on to the general department updates, police and fire.
Are you two like a match set, you know, where one goes, the other one is closely behind?
Usually that's the way it works.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah. All right, um, so we'll start with the new business, month of March, department handle twelve hundred twenty calls for service. Twenty-one cases involving criminal charges, sixteen motor vehicle crashes, five with injuries, significantly down from the past month. Um, one hundred fifty-seven motor vehicle stops, sixty-six citations issued. Month was a busy month for us for training. Uh, we had three officers out for multiple weeks, uh, doing their trainings, uh, that were tuition free through municipal police training council. And, uh, the classes include, uh, servant officer and technical leadership, technology search warrants and detective misleading behaviors. Sergeant Andre and myself continue to work on policy and procedures, towards accreditation, uh, we've, uh, released twenty-nine of the updates. Seventeen more that are ready, um, to go in the approval process and we still have one hundred and twenty-two more to do after that. So we're averaging one a week, so four a month, um, so it's definitely taking some time. Um, our student officers are graduating this Friday, um, you're all invited, it's in the afternoon at, at Pittsburgh State. If you want to go, just let me know, uh, I'll let you know the times. Um, with that being said, before, um, after I wrote this, we did get a resignation from another officer, going back to the fire service. Um, so I did post today, uh, an opening, um, for, uh, to fill that vacancy, you know, once we think we're full. We're back to going on the spotting again. Uh, radios, so Allstate Tower came out, I think, uh, was it now, Kristen, two months ago? Two months ago, uh, didn't put a, uh, man lift or a, uh, crane in their bed. Came back with a, a, uh, change of, uh, order, what was it, eleven thousand? Eleven thousand more, which puts them well above the second bidder, well above the second bidder. That did put a man left and a crane in their bed, uh, we're still working with, um, getting, getting on agreement for them to either how do you phrase it, not terminate, but.
They need to decide, uh, the change order has been denied. Um, they have to work within their existing bid spec because this was part of the due diligence that they had to do as part of the site visit that they had, um, it's quite obvious that climbing in a crane is part of this project. Um, and so they are required to do it within their current bid, or we will have to, or they can cancel the contract.
Yeah, so we're hoping that they cancel the contract, so we can move forward. Um, on the bonus side, you know, once their new equipment comes in, we're only gonna have one installation of antennas in, so we're gonna probably save two days of labor. Um, all in all, uh, we'll coordinate the two, uh, phase one and phase two together, even though we're trying to get them done six months apart and phase it in. But, uh, that's the only benefit to this side, but we still have hard disk radio reception. So that, that's the downfall, but that's where we have our phones and try to look at the app and we know where we have to go, we just don't know the information yet, so.
Um, and, oops, sorry, we did receive the paperwork from the, um, federal government regarding the four hundred thousand dollar grant last week. And can begin the process of filling out all of the lovely documentation that we need to do in order to get that money. Um, but we are finally able to move forward with that, so looking forward to being able to secure that funding.
Yeah, and we've already specked out the third, third phase of the job, so, um, the money will definitely, uh, be nice to get it sooner than later, um, you know, so maybe by the fall, we can have the third phase done. But, you know, and we're just fortunate to get it for, uh, well, we all pay taxes, but we're just fortunate to get some of our tax money back. That's it, that's all we have.
Questions?
Mm-hmm, now let Scott go first, he hasn't any. Um, on the ACO report, it started at number seven, is there a page missing?
That is, it's March seventh, that's the date.
Okay, alright. Alright, um. Officer Lima, don't forget, I need the write-up.
Oh, yeah, he did, I'm, I'm on the fourth, right now, before I forget, I'm not being rude, going on my phone in front of you.
No, no, that's fine, uh, Officer Lima.
He did respond to me, um, I thought he copied us both, he must have just replied to me.
Okay, uh, Officer Lima, along with Officer Andre, are being recognized at the Red Sox, uh, Blue Sox take overnight in May, so I needed both their bios for that, um. Very impressed with Officer Lima, he was beyond humbled, Eric, when I met with him, he was like, really, like, kept asking, are you sure, are you sure, so?
So can you share the date of, in May?
May twenty-second, it's a Wednesday night, I will post the link again on the official, non-official Berlin webpages, if people are interested in purchasing tickets and remember five dollars of those tickets go towards our veterans. In the center of town, you know the speed sign?
Yeah.
Is anything ever being done with that, or are we still on, you gotta climb up, change the battery, you gotta climb up?
Change the batteries, yeah.
And then, uh.
We're actually supposed to do that today, but we ended up getting a flight call on, uh, Home and Suites, so.
It's a little low on the priority list for changing the battery, alright, and then just for sergeants, I was just going back and looking some notes, it's Sergeant Gilchrist, Sergeant Andre.
Yep.
And Goody, is he still acting, or is he?
In term, yeah.
Enter, in, in term?
Term, yeah.
Alright. Uh, those were the few that I had for.
Was that for your Woo Sox, or what was that? The question you just asked.
I was just curious, I was just going through after I received, you know, we were all copied on the resignation notice, and I was just like, looking at who the officers were and trying to figure out who they were, because half the time I run into them and I, you know, try to nonchalantly like, look down at their badge, um, you know, for their name, so. I was just trying to remember who the sergeants were in town. Okay, that's all I had for Chief Shatner.
Okay, Chief McQuillan.
All right, well, the fire department, uh, month of, uh, um, March, we had sixty-six calls for service, uh, which was about two point one responses per day. The, uh, calls that are broken down underneath don't add up to the sixty-six, we have a new records management system, and I'm trying to figure that kind of hides them a little bit differently on us, and we had some that weren't, uh, I did, this was actually a correction I made today, as I found, I was the calls that I originally put in, I was like, that doesn't seem like our call volume, so I was able to find about sixteen additional calls that had not been completed yet, uh, for paperwork. Um, the fire prevention activity is listed there with about seventy inspections, then, which is on average for what our, uh, normal monthly, uh, um, inspectional services do, uh, activity wise, just the call volume remains steady for the month, uh, we had several incidents on I forty-nine, I, I four ninety-five, along with early start to the brush fire season, um, limited snow coverage, we had love for fires to develop in the dead grass, leaves and the mulch, um, none of them were that large, but, um, it's just that it's enough activity just to warn people, just be careful with your open fires. Um, Fire Watch at the Berlin Memorial School is continuing, um, our, uh, our last date that we had didn't go well, um, so uh, the sprinkler system is not up and running, um. We have a second acceptance test that is planned for May second on Thursday, and all indications are it actually will go much better. We had a pre-meeting, uh, last weekend, uh, it seemed that everything was right where it needed to be, everything was in working order, and there were just a few minor punch lists that they needed to do to complete that, so my hope is after Thursday, we'll be complete with the, uh, with the details of the school. Um, with that, we also had a much better, uh, uh, month when it came to filling shifts in the department, we had twenty-eight unfilled shifts in the month, which is again, one of the lowest that we've had since I started tracking it, um, and I'm hoping that our staffing ability will continue to increase as the school details drop off, and we have some new members coming in the department, and I have people getting a little bit more active. Um, the command staff, uh, which is the officers and myself, uh, at the, uh, at the beginning of March, uh, we went to the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts Professional Development Conference, which was held in Worcester, um, and all of us but one were able to make the two and a half days, which had a lot of, um, uh, leadership programs, uh, that they did, uh, you know, just for managing a modern day fire department and stuff, and, um, some of the industry standards, um, that was good to expose our staff to, it's been a couple of years since they've been able to attend a professional development experience like this, so uh, uh, I think it was very good for them, and they got a lot out of it. Uh, department wide, we spent March training on water rescue operations specific to cold water entry. Uh, included donning the cold water rescue suits, entering the water to retrieve a victim, inflating and operating our rescue boat, and using other devices from shoreline to support the victim and the rescuers. Uh, on the EMS side, uh, members completed training on treatment protocols, uh, that are based on the new guidelines that are released by the Office of Emergency Medical Services every year. So those are the new updates that they change, um, some additional, uh, drugs and medications that they'll give to us and standards that they have. Um, I want to give a shout out to firefighter Michelle DeBeau, uh, who spent Saturday, March ninth, doing a stair climb at the, uh, American Lung Association's annual fight for air climb, the one Boston place in Boston. Um, they climbed seven hundred and eighty-nine stairs, uh, to the forty-fourth floor of the local landmark to raise awareness for those with lung disease and lung cancer, um, I did include a new news clip there, which she's in, kind of, you know, stating what they're doing and stuff, so, yeah, she.
Oh my gosh. They, they looked like when they got to the top, most of them looked like when I just come up the stairs here.
It's, it's a lot, but it goes to, it goes to a good cause, um, I also want to recognize Michelle, she did participate in the Dr. Tuesday at the school by coming in and volunteering her time to read to a group of school kids there. Uh, she's very active with the kids and she relates very well with them, she has a good connection with them. Um, just under initiatives, I want to continue to highlight our home safety check program, uh, we still have residents that are using it, that are calling, uh, and it's getting us into their homes and helping them, so that's, that's a good program. Um, March twenty-fifth, we had a training class with representatives from CSX Rail Lines, uh, this training went over, uh, emergencies on their right aways and how to deal with them. Uh, they, was approximately a three-hour class that we hosted, and we had first responders from Marvel up to, um, Lemonster that arrived for it. Uh, it was in a forward class that advised several new ways for us to handle emergencies on their right away. Continuing to work on grants, uh, because it's that time of year to close out, some of the grants that we've had over the last couple of years, and apply for new grants, which I will tell you is time consuming and, um, it's just a rough time of year for grants, so I'll leave it at that. Um, the flooring, the station was replaced and updated on the main hallway, which I'm sure you guys, uh, already are aware of with the bathrooms, like kitchen area, and just to shout out to Fred Cummings and Ken Patton for assisting and managing the company as they were in and out, as we hit, so, you know, calls and appointments and stuff, and obviously being a secure area, they were stuck kind of holding the ball there. Been doing some spring cleaning and getting rid of some of the equipment and tools that we have, reached the end of their life, um, and one of the things that I want to point out is my intent to get that mustard truck out of the EMS building and stuff, and we'll be looking at getting rid of that and getting it off the insurance. Um, I'm just waiting, we're almost at that point where the ground is soft now, but I think we're gonna be able to do that, uh, in the next week or two. Um, and the last thing is October fifth is going to be our open house for two thousand twenty-four, um, we've had a couple of planning meetings and we have some really good ideas to enhance the program that we've always had and show some of the new things that we have this year, so more to come on that as we get closer. But I wanted to throw that out, that's gonna be Saturday, October fifth.
Saturday.
October.
Oh, this is twenty twenty-three.
Right, you won't have, you won't have twenty twenty-four, October, and then to read it back.
Well, you know, I, I, I noticed that you had in your report, was it the fifth or the sixth, and then Kristen had the third in her TA report. It's, it's a Saturday, though.
It is a Saturday, yeah, it should be, um.
October fifth is a Saturday, it's the first one.
Okay.
Yep, that's the beginning of fire prevention week, what we try to tie it into, um, so be a public safety open house, and we hope to have a lot of activities there for the residents to share.
Alright.
Glad you heard it, correct my misinformation.
Alright, questions for Chief McQuillan?
I have two, um, you mentioned about doing some station cleaning. Is the beam still in the closet when you come around the corner, so you go by your office? You take that corner, and there's a closet, don't you love the visual? And there's a closet right there.
Yep.
Is the beam from nine eleven still in there?
No, actually on the wall, as you, as you continue down the hall, it's on the left-hand side, heading towards the kitchen, sitting on the hall, I've been there.
Oh, yay, I'm glad that that finally got up.
Um, it's a beam from?
From the Twin Towers, from the, uh, after it was, uh, destroyed and stuff, through, through the tunnel of the towers, they were able to get a section of that building to put up, and it's marked up there with the FDNY and, uh, Port Authority Police.
Oh.
Oh, that's great, that's great, um. So you had sent through an email on the station design? So I'm wondering, during coffee talk, there were quite a few questions about it, will, do you know if you'll be speaking at town meeting?
Yeah, if questions come up, I plan on to speak.
Okay, bring that, because I'm sure we'll probably, well, I know we probably would have answered some of the questions from the audience, but, um, yeah, just make sure that you tuck that in your back pocket somewhere.
Will do.
Okay, alright, that's it.
Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we're gonna move on to the town administrator report.
You just gave my evaluation?
Oh. Yeah, yes I was, I had scribbled over it. Uh, no, I'm not going to skip over that. Alright. So, um. It's been a, it's been a process that the board has to go through every year. Um, Kristen did a self-evaluation. Um, we did our own evaluations, the three of us. And then I have written a cumulative review, I've also met with Kristen um, to talk to her about the evaluations. And we did get, I think, three feedbacks from department hits, right? And so I don't know if you want me to read through the different categories and the numbers. They're basically, the average of the three of us for each individual area is, um, four. Customer service, I believe, was three point seven. And financial management was four point three. But otherwise, the rest of them were all fours. Um, so, the board has some differences from each other on which are Kristen's strongest points on her evaluation. The overall evaluation in all areas cumulatively is a four. Um, budget was a strong point for all members. It was agreed that Kristen's continued transparency with communication and good listening skills is important. Having good supervision skills and support for personnel when needed is supported by the board. All three board members agree that overall Kristen meets expectations and in some cases exceeds expectation. I'm pleased that we were able to review the Town Administrator Act included in a recent training, we need, we need to become more familiar with our responsibilities as select board members. What is our job versus what is the town administrator's job, so there's no confusion and we can model good behavior for others. Kristen can only be directed to do something by all three board members in a post meeting. I would encourage both board members, I have already done this, um, with questions, to always feel free to talk to Kristen and discuss. Um, and if there's something that you, from your own evaluation, want to talk to her about, um, please, you know, set up a time, come in and talk to her. Um, and I believe that this was a very good evaluation. And, um, we're so happy you're here.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I think that's a decent sound.
Okay, we need to vote, um, for the cumulative evaluation to approve it.
Um, alright, see if she has any commentary back.
Sure, sure.
Sure, I don't know if I should do it before or after the vote, so.
Either way.
Appreciate that, um, no, I've, I've read through everything really carefully, um, I, I really appreciate all of the comments and feedback and I've taken a lot of it, um, you know, under advisement, so that I can process everything and, um, you know, make improvements in areas where I can, um, I really love being here, I love this town, I love this community, I love working with all of you, I look forward to continuing to work here, um. You know, I've been in local government for a long time, ever since I finished school, and, um, I'm pretty passionate about it, and so I just appreciate the opportunity to be here, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alright, anything else?
No, I am fine, uh, making a motion to approve the, uh, the, uh,
Cumulative.
The community review, communal.
The review.
The review that we put together, the three of us, or you have put together probably three of our comments and the others.
So is tonight the night to play words against friends, you know, when we do, if you're struggling, okay?
Benadryl is your friend.
Oh, Benadryl, nice.
Is that what's in there?
No, no, this is, this is water.
That's good.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have, um, a motion and a second, is there anything else, anybody else wants to say? Then, uh, otherwise, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now the TA report.
Right, alright, moving on.
So we had a lot going on in the last month, obviously finishing up preparations for town meeting, which is next Monday, May sixth at seven thirty. If I haven't said that enough, it doesn't hurt to plug it one more time, uh, Berlin Memorial School gym. Uh, like to see all registered voters come out and make your voices heard. Uh, the warrants were mailed out to all households on Tuesday, April ninth, that's earlier than last year and earlier than required by the town bylaws, because we want to get the information out as far in advance of town meeting as possible. Um, couple of things under grants and a couple of things that have actually come in the last few days. We began working on a Green Communities Grant with Energy Committee Chair Tim Weissaki, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and Guardian Energy, which is due May tenth. Uh, we are working on some weatherization and HVAC system control upgrades for the town offices. Obviously, we have wide variations in temperature going on in this building. Um, and that is being informed by another grant that we received from Maya, our insurance company, to do, uh, HVAC assessment at the town offices, so those are dovetailing really nicely together in terms of timing. Um, I also began looking into the possibility of applying for a grant from Mass Office of Disabilities to upgrade our website with a particular focus on accessibility, um, and I can report that I heard from Meg Kilcoyne's office, uh, Representative Kilcoyne's office this morning, that, um, an earmark for the town of Berlin has been put in their budget for IT upgrades for the town, including the website, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars. We had asked for a hundred, but you know, we'll take twenty-five, we'll, we'll take anything.
Right.
Um, so we think it's probably about thirty-five thousand to upgrade the website, so we'll have to see what happens with that. May make sense to match that with some funding from the ADA grant now, um, because we could say that, you know, we're funding the bulk of it potentially through an earmark, and then we'd be seeking to make sure we make those extra accessibility updates through the MOD grant. Um, also, the one-stop grant application has been put in through CMRPC, um, working with the planning board to update the town's zoning bylaws, to do an assessment and evaluation of zoning, um, and I'm really interested to see, I hope we get that. Um, I, I think there's definitely some areas in the zoning that could be improved to make the town more um, business friendly in certain areas, um, and also help with appropriate growth where it should happen. Um, so I, I think that's gonna be interesting to watch and see what happens. And then I received an email late Thursday afternoon that it's Lori Trahan's grants, again, that are due mon, uh, that are due tomorrow noon. I wasn't gonna apply again, because I figured that was a little greedy to get four hundred grand last year and ask for more, but Jake, um, called me over the weekend and asked that I put in an application, so the only one I really had ready was the River Bridge Bridge work to finish that off, so, uh, I put in eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I figured it's a shot in the dark, but I put it in there, um, and you can put up to five projects, so Chiefs and I talked today about possibly putting in, um, some of the materials for the upstairs renovation. So unless, I mean, it's tomorrow at twelve, so I can't do anything too big, but if the board had other ideas you wanted me to put in for, I, I certainly could.
I think those are excellent.
Those are excellent, depend on the list, you know, and would definitely be sped out.
Okay, yeah, great, and like I said, I really was kind of like, I don't want to ask and be greedy, but he said, no, you should definitely put in, okay, alright, I will. You never know. Um, we did post the Assistant Treasure Collector position, um, as open till filled, with a priority given to applications received honor before May seventh. Like to give a special thank you to Karen Beloskis, who has been helping us out temporarily in the office, she's been a tremendous asset um, to our team, so many thanks to her for helping us. And, um, we've continued police union negotiations for the twenty-five through twenty-seven contract, and we will be updating you on the negotiations at your next regularly scheduled meeting, this one was just really packed, didn't want you to be here till eleven o'clock at night. Um, I believe we're still on track to finalize the agreement prior to the end of the fiscal year, so I think we're in good shape. Um, also, interestingly enough, if you hadn't heard, I was invited to go on a ride along, uh, with Officer Carl Corvo on Friday, April twelfth. I've never been on a ride along before, so I jumped at the opportunity, um, to get a better understanding of operations and learn about some of the challenges that officers face today, um, I would like to say that I came away with an even deeper respect for everything our public safety professionals do to keep our community safe, and I thank them for their service. Um, and many thanks to Officer Corvo in particular for taking the time to give me this opportunity, that, um, I, I just appreciate it so much. So, um, Berlin Memorial School lease, we are going to discuss in a little bit. Um, opioid mitigation funds, so we've been collecting money straggling in, or trailing in from a couple of different, um, sources, so there's a couple of different national lawsuits, there's TIVA, there's, uh, there's the main one that everybody knows about, the distributor one, there's CVS, there's Walgreens, there's a number of different ones, and to date, it amounts to thirty-eight thousand dollars, so Nishoba Boards of Health reached out to some of their member communities and said, would anybody be interested in pooling these resources, because obviously thirty-eight thousand is great. Um, but some of that was. Because obviously thirty eight thousand is great, um, but some of that was payments for years one through five. So we may not be seeing a lot more of that as it goes, and I haven't had a chance to calculate the total estimated amount. But it may make sense to start using some of those funds in conjunction with our partners at Nishoba and um area municipalities. So I will be setting up a meeting with Board of Health, Social Services. Um, in the, in the public safety in the upcoming weeks um to gauge their interest in participating in this group. And get some thoughts on potential uses for this funding and then bring back a plan to you all for protect, for potentially how we should move forward. Whether we want to do something on our own or if we want to do something with the um Nishoba BOH.
Jill, I ask you now or let you?
Sure.
I was just going to ask, what kinds of things can you use the money for?
There are very specific prescribed things. There's like a seven page sheet. There's like seven categories and then it breaks it down within each category. The two that Nishoba talked about as possibilities, I mean, this was really just a very informal first meeting. Or um grief counseling and support for families, um, you know, dealing with um friends and family in recovery. And um or that have passed unfortunately. Uh, and also they talked about something that was really neat sounding to me. It was called Mental Health First Aid. And it was about training community. So you, you know, probably far more about it than I do, but I had to Google it. So it's a little bit about training communities um on how best to handle and get resources uh for folks that are struggling with mental health issues. And a lot of that can center around um the opioid crisis or any other drug or alcohol or substance abuse issues. Um, and I had an interesting conversation with Chief McQuillan um about possible tie-ins to some of the things they see in EMS. Um, you know, out in our community. So it's uh just a few initial ideas. They don't want to create like a standalone program necessarily because it's not a permanent funding source. But an expansion upon some of the existing programs and maybe tweaking it a little bit to add. Um, the, I forget the, I think it's Jenna, Nishoba Boards of Health actually just got certified in the Mental Health First Aid program. It's a nationwide program, so.
Okay.
Interesting stuff. Stay tuned. We'll have more soon. So. And um, let's see, bunch of other different things too here. Um, one thing that was really interesting was um Discover Central Massachusetts asked to meet with me. Um, about travel and tourism and different ways to market Berlin. Um, of course, there, there is a fee for participation. That fee is five thousand dollars. Um, or you can do an add-on partnership that does more advertising for ten thousand dollars a year, but a lot of it. Includes not only like website, email blasts, Facebook posts. But they actually do advertising in Travel and Tourism magazines and take out like whole page spots on the community and different things that are here. So um I thought I would bring that information just forward to you for informational purposes and to see if it's something the board might want to consider. Um, you know, to put Berlin on the map. They are working with a lot of different agencies. They do get some state funding. Um, so that's why they're able to do it at a smaller cost than they would otherwise be able to do it. I did connect them with Liz Kelly at the Solomon Pond Mall. Um, and I was hoping to connect them with the hotel, but I've yet to nail down a contact over there. I don't know if one of you guys have a recent con, okay, so they were asking for a contact over at the hotel, so if you can get me that, that would be great.
You mean like an owner or?
The manager of the hotel that might be interested in doing some advertising.
Rodell, is that? Yeah, they're probably not around anymore, but when, when we did put the, put the shovel in the ground, you know, it was the Rodell family.
Oh, yes.
R O E.
Okay, and I don't know who the manager is over there right now, but um would be interesting to, to see um how we could connect up. So um, and you know, there, we talked a little bit before about what Marlboro is trying to do with Donald Lynch Boulevard. And um I certainly said they want to speak with Marlboro about travel and tourism in that area with the New England Sports Complex that's there. Um, and all the things they're doing. I also passed along a potential lead that Costco may be looking for. A Central Massachusetts location and I immediately thought of Donald Lynch Boulevard. So um that actually came from Victoria on COA. So I passed that along to the mayor of Marlboro as well. So we'll see what happens. All right, and there's more, but I won't ramble on. There's a lot, so.
I think it's only a couple of years ago, but it could be five. Uh, the, the historic commission working with, I think even uh the Smithsonian was looking at. When you were talking about Berlin tourism as sort of historic farm tours, as a tie-in between sort of the uh. Steen's Farm.
The what?
Great Oak Farm, um, as one, you know, as that actually has a trail on it and it's several others. We have a lot of farms that look a lot like they did years ago and traditional farm stands. And sort of a hiking, biking, sort of uh, uh, few of those as a tie-in to, you know, as a way to. I know, I know, yeah. Uh, but it was, it was a thought at one point and how that sets Berlin apart from other places.
And you know, interestingly enough, the state delegation did a farm tour. I don't know if they came to Berlin, but they did a farm tour of Central Mass. And actually, I think they did other farms, but they did a particular one in Central Mass about eighteen or nineteen. And they came out and looked at, I, I remember this distinctly because um Lester has Cooper's Farm, which is one of the largest operating dairy farms still, you know, in existence in the area. So that might be interesting to, to connect with whatever they're doing at the state level. And I happen to have a meeting tomorrow, the weekly meeting we have with Ann Gobi, who is the Director of Rural Affairs. So something to ask about and also to bring back to Discover Central Mass.
Um, at Coffee Talk, uh, one of the questions that came up about actually the, the additions or the build-out here for police and fire. Really was how it tied into the HVAC. I was actually concerned for several other people is that, that there wasn't exact plans. If we already have a, what was described a Frankenstein sort of uh system now, how do we not, how is this going to make that less of a problem? Um, and so in preparation for town meeting, expecting all and talking about potentially a green grant that would tie everything together would be. Would probably address some of those concerns at town meeting.
And one of the things that I believe was anticipated, Chief and I talked today in the conceptual design was mini splits. Um, so that would address that area itself. But again, wanting to make sure it ties in with the overall building and as Tim Wysocki said, we're not Frankensteining it further. Um, so that's something we need to talk about. The tricky thing is it has come up so quickly. It is last minute without the full design plans. We won't have all the answers for town meeting. Um, we're, we're hoping we'll be allowed to move forward, but we'll, we'll see. We'll get as much information as we can for the meeting.
And I think our major goal is to keep it independent, free from them.
No one can hear you unless you come up here.
No, we can, but.
The, the people at home can, the recording can.
If you have an idea. I mean, it's the chair's meeting, but I just didn't want your idea to not be heard.
I, I think, you know, um, I was there with Chief McQuillan and uh, I was talking with the HVAC people from Asavet. I said, the most important thing is we need to stay independent from the building system. That is for the twenty-four years that I've been here in this building uh has not run right, you know, a single week. Um, you know, so this is going to be living quarters. Now, we can't have a cold, we can't have it overly hot, like we, we need to have something individualized uh to make sure that, you know, number one, we want to stay green. We don't want anything with fossil fuels, so the mini splits, of course, do heating and air conditioning. That's what I do in my house. Um, you know, and uh, so yeah, that's a, that was a big concern of ours is, is to stay uh, you know, energy efficient and code. And, you know, we talked about insulation and, you know, whatnot. So yeah, yeah, we definitely have that top priority.
And that very well may be the solution. Um, I wish I could say that I hadn't been through this before, but I have with an older town hall. And we actually did a third floor renovation, which is probably where the third floor renovation came from in my head now. Um, this is upstairs renovation. That was actual third floor, put an elevator in the building so you could access it. And they determined the most energy efficient way um was to put in mini splits in all those offices up there. Because they were having so many issues with the heating and cooling system in the rest of the building. So, you know, it was kind of nice for the folks in the third floor. They had no problems anymore. We just were still struggling to fix the rest of the building, but hopefully the Green Communities Grant will help with the rest of that.
Yeah, so like I said, we're, we're definitely on, that was our number one priority is, is to make it green. So we still don't know how much heat we're losing from the first floor to the second floor. So are we even going to have to turn the heat on upstairs? It's gonna, it's gonna be the other question.
It's probably gonna be hot.
So, um, yeah, there's gonna, there's a lot of variables involved and, you know, we have spent twenty-four years trying to figure out our system here to no avail. Um, so we're better off, you know, an independent system um that we can actually control the remote down there, so.
Okay, keep an eye on it. We all said, do you have questions for?
Of course I do.
Kristen?
Um, to piggyback on Scott, the lady that we were working with for the Smithsonian was Trish Settles out of CMR PC. No one dug up an email. She was like our go-to gal. So I don't know if she can help. When we had our open meeting training last week, uh, town council indicated that they were going to send along the slides. Do you know if they have?
I do, I have them. I apologize. I haven't sent them out yet, but I will.
Okay. Clarification in my head on one of the warrant items. And, and I did want to ask last week, um, because I wanted to make sure that I had it right. On the IAC, this is where elected officials, so I'm an elected official. I take insurance. I run for the same position. In a couple of weeks, I win. I get to keep my insurance for that one term or I keep it in perpetuity as long as I keep running and winning for the same.
That, the second.
What you just said.
Yeah, the second one. As long as you keep running and winning, you, you continue to keep the insurance.
So where is the cost savings?
The cost savings is that at some point people don't run for those positions anymore.
There won't be anybody anymore.
Well.
I was waiting for your reaction.
Nope, okay. I, I wasn't sure and I didn't want to ask because I didn't want to cause any confusion. And have people strolling out the door with, oh, wait a minute, Scott said, wait a minute, no, Peg asked, now I'm confused. So I figured that I would just ask now.
Right.
So as long as you keep winning, you keep getting insurance in that same position.
If you want it.
That was the vote of the board.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That was the compromise we made to sort of get it all through.
Okay, all right. Next week, our meeting is at seven at the school?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll meet a half hour beforehand.
We will.
So we'll post for seven.
Yep.
And can I ask one question? Do we ever put anything small on that? Could we?
Yeah.
Um, we rarely have anything because we usually sit at the front table and we hardly hear each other.
We have done small things at that, not hearings, but sometimes it's, well.
An approval of.
Not a hearing, but I didn't know those lease documents for the solar project. He really can't wait till May twentieth to move forward, so wanted to know. It's signing three documents to get us a lower rate on our high.
And if you have any questions, you need to call Kristen before the town meeting.
Right.
So that we don't have a lot of questions going on.
Yep.
Well, we'll all, because we'll also have line item transfers um for the joint select board and FinCom to review. And potentially a reserve fund transfer too for the FinCom.
I think we've done reserve for, except with FinCom saying like the table next door, it is, you have to have a meeting where it's sometimes taken care of.
Yeah, papers were just swirling.
And I knew the line item transfers were okay, but I wasn't sure if other things and, and I wouldn't put anything else on.
Think it's going to be, take too long.
I think it would take two minutes.
Okay.
So, but, and I can get that, he's just going to have the documents to me, he said in the next day or two. And I can get them right out to you as soon as they're available. So you can take a look at them.
Okay.
And then the last question I had, there was an email that had come in on April twenty-second. Uh, there was a request by residents to have a traffic survey done. Just wanted to make sure that one didn't slip through the crack.
We did?
Yes, there was an email received. Uh, yeah, sent April twenty-second at seven thirty-four P M. Good evening, select board members. You're on it, I'm on it. So I just wanted to make sure that it didn't.
Oh, yes.
Unresponded to.
Who, who is it from?
This relates to Solomon Pond Mall.
Any activities there?
So what I will do, because um that did get forwarded to me, thank you. Because that one, since it was all you specifically, I don't get it, um, but you had sent it to me. So I will forward it for potentially traffic safety to have a conversation about. And also, um, they have some concerns about allowable uses at the mall. Um, that will be on the May twentieth agenda and I'm doing a little research into that before the meeting.
Yep, just want to make sure that when people reach out, we reach back. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, moving on to old business and the Berlin Memorial School lease.
Okay, so good news, really nothing much to change. We worked out the language with regard to the use of the gym, which was really just to say we will comply with the school. Um, policies that, that they have related to use. The policy that's in place states that we don't get charged use fees, but there is that custodial fee as we've discussed. Um, and I did clarify, and I can't remember if I said this at the last meeting or not, but they would not charge us for a town meeting. Um, unless it was like on a Saturday or something really off cycle where they just didn't have anybody in the building to lock it up. Um, and if it's the one where there's people from the schools there, they may not even have to anyways. Um, they were very understanding and accommodating about that. So just a couple of minor changes with regard to that paragraph four. Um, and actually, I think I, let me just check the TA report. Um, we're still waiting for Exhibit C. That's the one thing, and I've been going back and forth um with Carol on that. This is um the Lessee fixed property. So what we just need is a list from the schools of anything they've added to the building that can't be removed. Should they ever decide to go somewhere else, which also is kind of an unanticipated thing. But say they put kitchen, they, whatever in that can't be relocated. We need to know what their assets are that go beyond anything that we have in the building that's ours. So that's literally just a list from them and we can attach that to Exhibit C and then move forward. So everything else has been clarified. I think we're done. The school committee did vote to approve it. Um, it's often typical that the Lessee would sign the lease or approve the lease first, which they have. So I bring it back to the select board for review and discussion.
And to be clear, these would be resold improvements they did to the building using Berlin taxpayer dollars. Because where else?
Unless, or a grant, I, it could be, I mean, they got, you know, there were weird things during COVID that came out, I mean.
In a house, anything.
Again, I think the idea that they would permanently move somewhere else, it would not be a big sort of project in kind of a whole is, so.
This is just standard term of the lease kind of deal.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have questions. We've gone down this path a bunch, but next change, I'd make the motion that we approve and sign the school lease.
Right.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Excellent.
And moving on to new business. You know, I had mentioned, I think a couple of meetings ago that why not start at six thirty? Give us an extra half hour before. You know, everybody gets crabby and tired and we all need to go home. And so I wanted to hear if there was any. Agreement with me? Disagreement?
I think crabbyness is length of getting not start time, but uh, I, I wouldn't object to an earlier meeting.
And six thirty works for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unlikely I get dinner most of the time, but I'll be, I'll make it work. I grab a sandwich.
Tell them to, tell them to pack it up for you. Peg?
I'm fine with that. It doesn't matter.
Okay. So why don't we start, I mean, and if it doesn't work out, we can always go back.
Yeah.
You know, if it's too difficult for you or, or pegged to get here at that time, you know. We can always go back.
Yep.
All right.
Well, don't we need a vote?
We can.
And then a date to start.
We would, that we start, move the select board meetings to six thirty, starting May twentieth. Is that the next one?
Uh, May fourteenth, I don't know that we're going any, that's the Tuesday weird off-cycle one if we need it. But I, I don't know that we will. I would take the vote for the fourteenth, just in case we end up needing it.
Or the fourteenth or after.
Yeah.
Something like that.
That would be the next official one.
I would, if we could hold it to the tw- Tuesdays or even for me to.
Oh, okay, then make it start the twentieth.
Okay, then, yeah.
So if you make it start the twentieth, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, so summarize, we're starting at six thirty, starting May twentieth.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, um, and can change back if needed to seven. I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we got the Berlin Lions Toll Road. On Saturday, May eleventh. With the rain date of the eighteenth.
I understand this is an annual.
Yep.
Event, nothing out of the ordinary in terms of the requests, and there is feedback in there. Um, from the police department that same as always, a detail officer is needed um, to assist them in the roadway.
And it, and. There was no, no, was there an email that maybe we got at some point?
Yes, there was. It was from Mark Smith and it kind of got lost as we were doing.
Oh, that was just to get the ball rolling? Okay.
Cause I had responded to him and said that we had it, but we hadn't met for a few weeks, because I didn't want him to think that we were just.
Right.
And then I forgot, and he wrote back and said, well, and I went. Kristen D. Mark.
And we got that too.
Yeah. And he knows he needs a detail.
Is this Pat's news?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's uh, one of the headline guys.
Alright.
Uh, I make the motion to approve the Lions voluntary toll road on May eleventh with a rain date of May eighteen.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And. I think I have just about. All the town meeting motions. All set.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to Kristen this afternoon and just asked her about. The first uh, three. Because June did say she really didn't want to read those articles, so. If you don't care, I can plug you in.
Sure.
To one of those.
Yep.
Okay. And um, because I think so far, I think I had. Three, three for me, two for you, and three, maybe four for Peg, I wasn't sure. Um.
Will you email those to me when you have them?
I will.
Perfect.
I will.
Cause I like to mark up or or email to all of us.
Right.
Yeah, because it's not a discussion, I know we would have, I agree with it.
No, it's just informational, um, and that's.
Okay.
At the chair's um, discretion to assign. But that way we'll have it all set up with our little.
Right.
Well, one of the things I did want to ask you, Peg, is the establishment of the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational Fund.
If Lynn wants to do it, Lynn can do it.
That was what I was wondering.
I was just reading down through them and picked up that one, so she wants it.
Alright, well, we'll, we can, we can ask her at some point, um. So I'll put that in the list that it could be Peg or Lynn.
So Chris, you're gonna take the two River Bridge ones?
Yeah, I think so. Um. I'm sure, I mean, I can certainly read the article and um, and Kristen will be there to help.
Yeah.
Explain what we've been doing over the last two to three years. Um.
I was gonna take the the OPEB ones.
Yes. Mm hmm. You took seven. And did you?
Take the transfer money into it, one, two, that's not.
And what number is that? The transfer one?
I'm looking for it now.
I thought it would have been.
Uh, fourteen.
Okay, yes, I'll put you down for that one too, if you'd like.
Yep.
Cause I put a question mark by me. I don't need to do that one unless you. You know, don't want to do it. Um. Is there anybody, I know that Peg, you'd asked about the municipal offices, maintenances. Um, and it's a high, the highway superintendents. But he's, he's not in Berlin, right?
We can invite him to speak, just like anybody else.
Yes, but you will still read the article then.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, then it goes into planning board. Put you here for.
Chris, thanks for coming to town meeting from the Church Advisory Committee.
Yes, he has offered to give a presentation.
Okay.
Yes, so you.
Yep.
Have to introduce him. Or ask the moderator if he can speak.
I I might email him, because I. Might still wonder at the beginning about my, my journey, if that helps the audience.
Okay. Well, if I've missed any, I'll go back through them again.
Okay, if you need me on any of them, I have no problem.
Okay.
Just assign it.
Alright.
I think we've taken the ones that like we, we want to present, and so give the rest any manner of form. And there are other presenters besides the three of us anyways.
And then there is one, um, the Affordable Housing Trust. But I think we're passing over it.
Twenty two, twenty two are being passed over, and that was the. From Coffee Talk. Because after a meeting, I reflected more on what you said too, and I think it really has been, I'd like to pass over, Barry asked for a motion to pass over. And then does, I think that might be the thing to be passing over and withdrawing.
Oh.
Because if we withdraw it, then it is not available at town meeting to talk about. We do a motion to pass over.
Okay.
And so if you make that clarification, I have no problem with the moderator saying Article twenty two has been withdrawn by the select board.
Well, I mean, yeah, I don't think we've ever done that.
I don't think we have either, and I.
We've just passed over.
I think it's an intriguing thing for ones that we know ahead of time are not going to be done.
I wonder if it's still on the warrant if you can withdraw it.
Passing over without a motion.
Right. Yeah, we talked to Barry, Barry's obviously had a motion on those.
Okay.
I was almost thinking also, thinking of going to plays and like having a sign at the front that says, just FYI, these motions are being withdrawn tonight will not be discussed, you know, just so that people could. If you're walking in the room, expected to like really fight on, I don't know. The people who are the most passionate about twenty two have already committed that we're going to pass it over in several different settings, so. I'm sure they'll stop just to make sure we hold our word, but.
Oh, yeah.
Purpose is to pass over it.
Okay.
Uh, we were just mentioning the citizens petition, um, the citizen who did the petition has requested that be withdrawn. I don't know if that individual plans to attend town meeting to actually withdraw their petition, the cleanest way is to have them withdraw their or pass over their petition. But we'll find that out too.
Yep.
Okay. And the, and the article for the Peg account.
Which I was.
Do you want to talk to Roger?
I was sad because I thought it was mine.
I know, the first year you were here.
I did, I was so excited, then quickly disappointed. Um, yeah, I can talk to it.
Yes.
Roger, it might be another one of those where they don't, because I'm sure he's. Filming and probably won't want to come up.
Okay.
He's sitting and I can see him through the wall.
Send smoke signals if you want to do it, Roger.
Yeah. Blink the lights.
Alright, uh, then we're gonna move on to discussing the facility study.
Thank you.
There you go.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Come to the microphone to say that.
That's right, Roger, can you please come and present?
He'll add it from the other room.
Um. So the facility studies. All unfortunately, they're incomplete because we're missing several key facility studies. From a couple departments. Uh huh.
And we left.
And uh, really without them, um. We can't really go forward with them. Uh, with the study as a whole, I can tell you that currently the departments that have chimed in, and again, thank you for your.
Is this your?
Help with that, yeah.
Is this your thing?
Yeah.
You put together?
Oh, no, uh, that's, I haven't set that one out because it was incomplete. I sent it to Kristen.
Okay.
Oh, I just, uh, sorry, I shared it with just the board, just for reference.
Alright.
I didn't send it to anyone.
Currently, if you look through the comments, everyone wants to keep all the buildings and use free cash to pay for everything to fix them, which.
It's not surprising.
It's not surprising and is.
That's why government is hard to shrink, is that everything out there has a, a continued.
Some of them are blank because they didn't.
Want to use it.
They didn't fill them out, so I'm thinking that. When we get the ones that are missing. Um, that we could probably have. Maybe a Plan B where we take a meeting and devote a substantial amount of time and ask people to come from the different committees and truly. Maybe we just ask them one question or two questions, you know, what do you see as the future use of this building? And it has to be legit, it can't be, oh, storage, oh, potential music, no, what do you see as this? And where's the money coming from? And free cash is not an option.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know, maybe the eval wasn't clear enough, it it's always easy to. Monday morning quarterback and shoulda, coulda, woulda, um. But yeah, we are missing some pretty heavy lifts from various departments that I would have hoped we had. So Kristen, I don't know how, I mean, I'm happy to take that and chase. Or leave that to you to chase, but um, otherwise, if we don't. We don't get the input, then. To me, this really was. A waste of time and a waste of money.
Oh, I I thought it was incredibly valuable and and I think we're the leadership body, I think people are allowed to give us feedback, but at the end of the day, the buck stops at the three of us.
Right.
And so people can advise not to sell a building, they could advise, and people who don't give commentary m- m- might not have the opportunity to influence us heavily on where this goes. Um, uh, I am torn, I think every, again, there's a, there's a group of people who like every individual building in town.
Mm hmm.
Um, but if you start looking at the costs of, especially if you look at the five and ten year cost for list of towns, it is more than we think we can probably do. And I think the number of buildings that are sitting. Let's just call them underutilized, is pretty substantial at this point. Um, sadly, you know, it costs money to rip down a building. Uh, government behaves slowly, I think the three of us have been on the same page about the Brown building for several years and, you know, it's creeping along, but. It's not exactly gone in a nice paved parking lot there that has handicap accessible, you know, spots for the courts is not exactly in place, or not just the courts, the courts are now future gazebo. You know, um. Uh, I try to think of what the process is opposed to like. What, I I have opinions on all the buildings, but like, what is a process I think might want to to go, and I think there are some buildings that I think clearly we want to say. What aren't going anywhere, they're really going to be used by things, there might be some of those immediate or year one stuff. That someone's the existing, I'm not going to be able to talk much longer. Um, uh, uh, existing uh, or surplus ARPA funds could go to like take care of some of the earlier stuff. Um.
Well, that's just it, I mean, there's some things that probably can, facilities guy can say when there's, oh, a window leaking. He goes in and he clocks it, or hey, we need to swap out the light bulbs to make them, you know, those are the easy ones, but it's the.
Mm hmm.
The larger ones that are truly going to cost tens of thousands of dollars that. Are sitting and breaking and deteriorating every.
I mean, I, I keep thinking of of, we clearly have storage issues.
Agreed.
You know, and we have several underutilized buildings, and so maybe we discuss among us and feedback from people who want to get feedback of what if some of the underutilized buildings. You know, would make for good, longer term storage. Um, uh, I think at some point we do the unpopular things and start saying, I don't know if these buildings really belong in the town inventory. Much longer and start exploring what happens next to them. Sadly, I think some of the reasons that some of those buildings don't belong in the town inventory because they're not overly useful, are also not overly useful in the private market either, and are not going to be something that like someone's gonna come along and say. Hey, you know, I don't want to pick on a building. Um, hey, building X, the salt shed at, at, let's pick on the, the salt shed over at at Berlin Royal, I'll give the town a million and a half dollars for it, you know, that that's not out there. Um.
Some of them, the land is small, even if you combine the land, it's not in the same space, or it's a very secluded space that. You wouldn't want to put.
Right.
Something in.
Mm hmm.
Um, so yeah, no, I I know that the the ultimate decision lies with us, I was just. As Kristen was forwarding them to me, because I said, let me take that off your plate, let me take that off Dee's plate, it's important but not critical, super high. And I started putting that together, I was kind of getting discouraged as I was reading the reports and going. Could I have done something better? Could we have met with the committees on an individual basis, just popped in and said, this is really the purpose, again, easy to play, Monday night quarterback, and be like, ugh. Um, so we just got to figure out what to do going forward. And we just put a, put a date, make a date, and just say, if it's in, great, say, thank you, and if it's not, okay, then. Your lack of information means that you accept our decision. Done.
Okay.
You know, it may be just. We need to schedule and put it on an agenda, maybe people will come. Maybe we won't.
Yeah.
Of course, they may come. Perchance.
That's fine too, I mean, but you know, that's just it, if we decide to knock down buildings one through five, do you get a deal? You know, when you call up a person and say, hey, I have five buildings, normally you charge us a hundred bazillion for one building, if we gave you five, alright, do it for two fifty, psych, off you go.
Yep.
You know, get the notices out and get, you know, the information out as to. Why we're doing it, how we're doing it, the money that we'd save on insurance for the town. The money that we don't have to fix buildings, wink and blink and a nod. So, and I'm sure some people are gonna be like, oh my God, that's the oldest building, get down, and you can't take that down, and do, and other people will be like, oh, thank God, it is such a nice, or just take it down. So we've got to. Find. That balance somewhere in the middle, whatever that is, because we're gonna have to go to capital or look at. Are there, I know that several towns around us have received grant money to take buildings down, so maybe once we have a. Uh, a plan, then that's a reach out either to. Representative Trahan, Representative Killcoyne, Senator Kennedy, anybody else and be like, hey, can you find something to help us so that. It's not just tax money, um, you know, that the residents are forking over the building.
Right, and you know, sometimes um, it's a shame we can't have. Um, the ability to see the future.
You know.
Because, you know, you may take a building down and then say, ooh, we could have used it for that, you know? So, I mean, it'd be nice to. Try to do a little.
And maybe we end up ranking the buildings to say, hey, future use, this is high, hey, yep, oh, and then this one, oh, no, you know? And cross it off, I I don't know, I don't have an answer.
I I mean, I think the hardest things for us to be doing is, you know, because there's not unlimited funds, and is, what are we consciously not going to be doing as town government?
Correct.
You know, as I point out, often people ask more and more town government, I guess more and more from their citizens and more and more from the state government and more and more from the federal government, it is hard to to cut back somewhere and. And, you know, cutting back your footprint, deciding consciously that we are not going to do this anymore as a town government. It doesn't mean it's a bad idea, there's a lot of great ideas that don't get funded, um, and that maybe some things, both either as buildings or services. Are just done better for a a private nonprofit and not necessarily.
Right.
But that's more expensive to have to be done by government, so.
Or maybe it's something that we talked to capital planning about and saying, do we wheel this into the five year plan to say, take down buildings one and two this year? We wait, take down buildings four and five, you know, two years from now.
I mean, unless someone writes us a multi-million dollar check, uh, this is, this is a twenty year project, I mean, this is why I like seeing some of the twenty year numbers on some of these things is. Is uh, some things we might let a building go a little bit more in disrepair because we don't actually have a big plan for it.
Correct.
And some we know that we're gonna have to hold on to for a while. Um, you know, the the, I'll give, this building doesn't really meet great the needs of town government in a lot of different ways. But the idea of ripping this down and building new is just so much money, that that's just practically not gonna happen. And so we're probably investing money in this building, or we're about to invest money, we're turning in, or we're at least advocating for turning, you know, better sleeping stuff in this, and so. Maybe if we're looking at limited ARPA funds, we pick this building and uh, hopefully there's not much wrong with the new highway barn, and if there are things that are not going anywhere fast. And invest in those to so that long term money is not going to be thrown at those. Um, and then some of the other buildings that are uh, underutilized, that have a questionable future, we might let slide a little bit more and 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 where to go. I uh, someone approached me with, I thought was a crazy idea at the time, and it's just doing more is, you know, the housing trust has some money to potentially do some, some affordable housing in town. And are any of these buildings quirky and need enough that they would make a good, small house for somebody? Uh, with some money thrown at it and Habitat Community doing some renovation, or Habitat for Humanity type organization doing some renovations to it. Um, uh, and I haven't processed all that through, but there's a handful of buildings we're underutilizing, and boy, you know, uh, uh, that would be a neat thing to to think about.
Right, and most of these buildings already come with water and sewer.
Right.
I mean, granted, you'd probably have to upgrade them, but you, you know, don't incur the cost of. Drilling a well, you know, for a hundred feet, three hundred feet, so.
Or again, getting permission to drill the well, which is, we all know is not always the easiest to get.
Correct.
So, but that's where we stand, so. You want to pick a date, Kristen, that we ask for additional feedback, and if we get it, great, and I will update the spreadsheet, send it back around so that we can have a complete list, and if we don't, then Plan B is that we put a date on in a future agenda and say. This is, this is start of decision day.
And this is from the folks like the chiefs and, you know.
Right.
Yeah. And this is from the folks like the chiefs and, you know, yeah.
Various committees that might have, might feel they have some oversight.
Please fire facilities, we have not heard from, um, the building commissioner, unfortunately only did one building, which.
Okay.
Would love his input on the other buildings, nothing from historical on Bullard at all, so to me, those are your.
Okay.
Giant hit ones of, uh, I would think that, that the input from all of them would have. A lot of meat behind it.
I was thinking. May fifteenth, but some of it might take longer, why don't we shoot for May fifteenth and if it has to be end of the month?
Yep.
Yep.
And then, so we'll look at bringing it back on maybe a early June agenda.
Is there?
Would this be the type of thing that you could put on our website?
I wouldn't necessarily put this document, but I, the, with the came from the facility study commission, which is pictures of the buildings and. Some of their commentaries of what is working and what is not working in them. I think that would be great to put on a website and just a link to click here if you have a comment. Click here if you have a comment about any of this stuff, because I'm sure there's people in town who would.
Correct.
I, I, I bet there's people in town who, given enough time, would advocate strongly for each one of these buildings, and there's people in town who'd advocate. Everyone, it, it's one of these, there's someone who wants each one of these buildings torn down too, so, so.
I mean, because the, the studies are great, it's got a lot of information.
Yeah.
You know, what's wrong, what needs to be fixed, cost now, cost five years from now, ten, twenty years from now. That it's kind of hard to argue with facts when someone says, keep the building and we say, well, it's gonna cost. Four hundred thousand dollars in the next two years because you have a blip.
And, and I think you can quibble in the margin sometimes about whether or not the roof is, you know, not a hundred thousand, but fifty thousand, not a hundred thousand, but two hundred thousand, and as a whole. The roof of that building is in horrible shape, it needs to, to get done soon or the building could get in worse shape or something, or. Or, uh, uh, but, but I think that there, to get, I, we've learned many times, there's some incredible, uh, skills and opinions in town. Um, I think if we blast the heck out of it, we'd probably only get ten or fifteen commentary and this, we probably have other things to blast a lot. You know, we might not get, but, but, you know, it'd be interesting to see if someone had some, some cool ideas.
Um, in regards to the highway building, just an update on that, um, we are gonna move forward with doing the doors ourself, it's fifty six hundred dollars. And the fighting back and forth, it's just not working on the materials.
Some amount of time.
Right.
The materials that were shipped.
Valuable too, so, yeah.
Right, and the materials that were shipped can't be used.
Talking about.
Yes, it's also costing us money every month that we don't have it done, so.
Oh, yes. So, um, we, Fred made an executive decision that I agree with to, to move forward. Um, unfortunately, none of the materials that were shipped are the right shape, as Fred had said before, but it's fifty six hundred to have what overhead door come in and do the whole thing.
Yep.
So we're gonna do it. How's the solar coming along?
Good, so the solar has actually been up and running for three weeks.
Wow.
Um, it's doing well and, um, we are able to achieve a lower rate, which he's going to explain to me why. Um, I think it's because other people have joined the power purchase agreement, but I haven't gotten a clear, exact explanation of why it's cheaper. Um, or if energy rates are somehow. I don't know, solar is at a premium, so we're getting more back and so we're saving more, I'm not exactly sure, but. Um, I, I will have that for you and he's gonna have all the documents to me the next day or two, but it is up and running. Um, very well, from what I understand and no issues.
Did they don't have air conditioning there, do they?
I don't know.
They open the door. No, I don't think that they do.
I don't, I don't know, so.
Can't remember, I haven't been down there for a while, so.
The one thing I heard is it's a little noisy. Um, so, uh, that's something that I recommended Fred should reach out to, um, he said that there's. The backyard or is really loud to be out there, so they just kind of avoid being over where the. Machine is, I don't know if anything can be done about that, but it's worth, worth an ask. But otherwise, no issues.
Okay. All right, well, sounds like we have a plan.
I like it.
So we'll move on to board questions on the agendas or liaison updates. Anything?
I have one for Kristen that she, a question was on the previous page. For Kristen, and I missed it till I flipped back and then you had already done your DA report.
From?
It was on the paragraph regarding, she said slowly as she tries to find it. Your meeting with historical commission that you had met with a potential engineer who may be able to assist, so I was wondering. That engineer, is he or she giving us their services for free and if not, where is that money coming from and how much would we be paying?
Great question, um, the initial consultation is always free. Um, so, no, th- this is actually, um, someone I, I've known for many years within civil engineering firm, Howard Stein Hudson, they were actually the ones that helped us write the half a million dollar complete streets grant. So we just had an informal call to say, hey, these are all the moving parts, there's a ton of site work in addition to building work. Can. Do you think you might be able to help us in, from a project management or clerk of the works kind of perspective? And if so, could you provide a proposal? So we know a cost, what would that look like? Would you be willing to come speak to the historical commission? So all of that is free, um, so he's working on something right now, uh, for the next historical commission meeting, which I believe is May eleventh. Um, he's hoping to have something for that meeting, may not be able to make it quite in time, but he's gonna try it May tenth, I think. So the issue is. There's a ton of site work, there's foundation, drainage, septic, retaining wall, parking. Just to name a few, then there's the issues with the building and. That would have to be paid for out of the existing funding that they have. But my concern is you may be putting the car before the horse, you may be doing things in the wrong sequence. And I know there are definitely people that want to help. But in order for me to. Pay someone even from town to do it, they have to be licensed and insured. So, and to have someone even just to advise in a project management or clerk of the works role, they, they have to have that for liability reasons. For someone to take a hammer to that building, they have to ensure the town and they have to have a construction supervisor's license. So this is the issue that we're running up against because I know a lot of little work here and there has been done. You know, either for free or kind of on the side, the problem is that is a town owned building, town owned property on our insurance, something happens to someone, they get injured on that site. Um, we have issues, I mean, OSHA could find us for things that I've heard have happened down there. So I'm very concerned about needing to bring in someone professional to manage that process.
Would you give this organization the write-up from the building assessment? Because that's gotta be part of the plan, okay?
I did, so they have that, they have the original Austin design plans from the parking lot that didn't get done when the ADA improvements and the elevator were made. Um, and they have what the previous engineers, the problem is the engineers are submitting all kinds of stuff and you have laypeople, myself included. Trying to go, should we do this? Should we do that? Should we do closed cell foam or a bulkhead or this? We're not qualified, I'm not qualified, I'm not an engineer. So I, I'm just concerned that we need some advocacy on behalf of the town. And I'm happy to have someone provide that advocacy from the town in a volunteer role, it's once we get into. You know, payment that we start to run into issues.
And historic has access to several funds to pay for some of this, I mean, some of the problems is that. No one jumped on this dark commission to try to understand water flow underground and, you know, current septic laws and navigate all the rules related to that. And, and so there's just, we're, we're outside the expertise of anyone down there, all of them have the greatest intent and all really want to go forward, but. You know, they're thinking, when it was renovate the Bullard house, it was like, what is going to be displaced inside the rooms and what color the wallpapers be and how to paint the outside.
And that they should be doing.
Right, and they, and they all are dying to get back to that because all their meetings lately have really all been, you know. Septic systems and, and foundation stones and, and sill work and what order things need to be done in and.
Yes.
That's why I got concerned when I saw that they were talking about having a local Berlin person come in and do and dig like another septic and I'm like. What, stop.
And it has to be prevailing wage, um, unless they're a sole proprietor, meaning they work for themselves and don't have any employees.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, it is town owned building on town owned property and we are subject to a lot of regulations, I mean. There's a reason why nineteen Carter did what nineteen Carter did.
Correct.
And, and they're smart in a lot of ways because they were able to avoid a lot of these cumbersome regulations and I get it. I really do. So, but unfortunately, we're subject to them.
And you know that like. The P O R S regulates septic systems. Decided that because it's a really a house, it has to have a septic in the size that would support a two or three bedroom house, even though it's designed to be, you know.
A museum.
Museum, who is not gonna ever have three people showering at once while a load of laundry is being done and the kitchen dishes are being done.
Water, water.
Yeah, because I had run into June and she was talking about the discussion between black water and brown water, I'm like, are you kidding me? So.
I mean, they know more than I know, which I'm very impressed with, they're watching videos on closed cell foam insulation and going, what do you think? And I'm going, I am not going to advise on that, you do not want me to advise. So I, you know, I'm just feeling like we're all a little fish out of water right now. And I just want to help and it's not to interfere or to step on anybody's toes, I'm just trying to figure out, how can we move the project forward and get the advice?
Yep.
That people can need, because that's the other thing too, when you have people that, you know, don't know how to move forward, it's, it's, it's stalemates because no one knows what to do.
Well, I mean, you, you need that list because, you know, there might be items that are dependent upon another items that can start, that can't be started until blah, 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 so when I say.
Right.
Chris, come in and fix the sills and, oh Scott, yeah, by the way, there's a drainage issue, the building might shift. Well, it's kind of silly for her to start work until, you know, he finishes his, but hers is an easy one, hers is longer, so.
I think they've been very good at trying to make, I think that's why their paralysis is that. They get different opinions and pointing really what the order is and there is a, I, I think a appropriate reluctance to. Step and make a decision to this first because at least one of the various people I've talked to in town, be it informally or formally. You know, said, oh no, this has to be done first, and like, oh, and this is how you get into like the drainage problem and the drainage problem that also affects eighteen seventy town hall and. Because you don't want to do any of the basement foundation stuff, you're still gonna have some water leaking in here and there and.
And are the big Boston engineers really telling us the right way to do it? Are there a cheaper way to do it that would still meet code and, and I, and I get it. I, I really do, so June, June Miller has, you know, we've, we've met increasingly more frequently, so I, I've invited myself to a few historical commission meetings and Fred came along to the last one. To talk about the tie-in with the complete streets project, because the other thing they've been talking a lot about is the sidewalk. And I'm like, well, that's all gonna get tied in with complete streets and I think they, they were a bit relieved to. Have that piece taken off their plate because there's been a lot of debate about the sidewalk and the. That piece of it too, and parking and how is parking gonna be addressed in the area? And that's all part of the complete streets project, so I'm just trying to make sure we're all on the same page. The broader picture of complete streets of eighteen seventy of Bullard and that whole area is being addressed.
Yeah, I mean, if you can give all that to one person, then as Scott said, leave the what's coming out of the tutorial to go up for the museum for June, that's theirs, but. Here's your plethora of designs and plans and input and let, and let someone can say.
Right.
It's like, wait. Here's the order, here's what we need to do, and oh, by the way, you thought it was five dollars, it's now, please add four more zeros on the end of it.
The problem is that, as I learned, um, there are two types of engineers, there's like structural engineers and civil engineers, so you do buildings or you do site work, it's like horizontal versus vertical. So our, um, the engineer that I know does site work, not building work. So he may be able to connect or refer to colleagues, but typically firms do one or the other. So that's the other piece and it makes sense why, why they're getting hung up too, because now you've got engineers working on this part of it and engineers working on that part of it and. You know, you've got different firms right now, you, you've got three architectural engineering firms involved in the project, so. You know, because one, partially because some couldn't take on the extra work, which I get.
Well, and you have the historical aspect to it as well, that you just can't come in and say, let's put up this type of ground molding, well, that one didn't exist in. More fifteen twenty nine, so.
Right, so I'm, I'm trying to just see what I can do to be helpful in that regard and, and just see if I can kind of tie up some of those loose ends and just. Bring it all together from a comprehensive focus, but unfortunately, you, you have to spend money to move these things forward. Um, and, and you, you know, you really want to make sure we do it the right way the first time. Yep, so.
All right, thanks, that was my question.
For a future meeting agenda, uh, to really talk about our, uh, public comment period and rules, I think that's one of the things that came out of the other meeting training. Since the, the three of us, out of the open meeting trainings was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, that, that we have a public comment period, but we have no real official rules around it. And so it, it, it's, it's easy to create those rules when there's not like eighty people standing and all want to talk for an hour each.
Right.
Our meeting goes on for fifteen hours or sixteen hours.
I believe I put that on the May or first in June meeting to bring some examples.
Thing and so, or, or early June.
Was this just to discuss the policy that we have and, and?
I think the policy I have is just to, I don't think we have one that's time sensitive, I think we have one that's about.
You're right.
Content and, and other stuff, but conduct, but not one that says.
Okay.
Our public comment period is going to be fifteen minute long, people can talk for X number of minutes each, you know.
You can only come up one time.
Uh, and you can only come up one time and we don't, and. The rules, maybe we don't have it at every single meeting, maybe we have it at the first meeting of the month and we give it a little bit longer time on it, you know, um. Again, it's not like there's been a bunch of people batting down the door, but again, it's easier to fix that problem.
Now.
Now than it would be in the middle of a, all you're doing this because you don't like the fact we're gonna talk about topic X or Y. You know, we don't have that problem right now, so it's, it's easy to fix.
Exactly, yeah.
And what I plan to do is just do a little research, draft something up that we can then work off of. Sometimes that's easier than starting from scratch.
I think she had one from another town that I thought was, was decent, I'm sure I could, we could quibble about it a little bit, but at least that's a starting point.
Yep, I, I asked her, you know, if she had.
I have, I have one though.
You have one.
I have a couple, yeah.
All right, here's two things that we need to sign, and then who would you like to sign as the landlord? The landlord and the tenant.
Oh, is that a, is it just one line?
Yeah, it's one line.
Yeah.
So that would be the select board chair.
Yep.
If it's only one line.
Congratulations.
Yeah, in perpetuity.
Yes.
You now own a school.
You're now a landlord in school.
Correct, oh, you already own the school.
Well, they did not sign the tenants yet, but you're gonna send that back.
No, and I have to, that's the one thing I didn't, if they signed it, I didn't get it, so what I may do is if I had, we'll, we'll figure out if they had one signed and I'll have you sign it or vice versa.
Yep.
We'll figure that out, but they did take the vote, so we're good there. Very true.
And then I'm all set.
Okay. Well then, why don't we? Since we have no executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.